We're gonna mute it for now.
What's all you've learned, Maureen?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 15 meeting for the Planning and zoning Commission. My name is Jo Meeley. I'm the Chairwoman for the Commission. As permitted by the Government's executive orders and indicated in the agenda for this meeting, this meeting may be attended in person or by remote, video, or telephone conference. Zoom conference access information was provided for the Commission members, applicants, and other interested persons to participate and noticed in the public hearing notice and on the agenda posted on the Town website. For those who are attending, I would ask that you mute yourself if you are able to do so so that we will not acquire any background noise. The other important reminders are first, every time you speak, you must state your name and title for the record. Second, be careful not to speak over each other as people listening will have difficulty in hearing what is being said. We do have to maintain a correct and clear record. For this reason, it's necessary when it comes time for the Commission members to comment and ask questions about a particular agenda item before action is taken and then to vote on the agenda item. Our Planner Maureen Houston will call the roll as needed. Also, the regular meeting is being recorded and recordings will be posted on the Town's website. I'm now going to ask Maureen to take attendance by calling the roll. Thank you.
Okay. John Michael O'Brien, the Excuse, can we hear us? George Miller.
Present.
Diane Jorsey has been excused. Timothy Zigma.
Present.
Brian Rogan.
Present.
Steve Wolman.
Present.
Peter Zarabozo.
Present.
Andrew Legnani.
Present.
Steve Vella Jr., also excused.
He's also excused.
And Chairman Bailey.
I am here, present. Okay, thank you, Maureen. Because our regular seated members are not, have been excused for the evening, I would ask that Peter Zarabozo and also Andrew Legnani, who's with us, one is remote and one a person, to be seated for both Diane Jorsey and John O'Brien, John Michael O'Brien. Okay. The first order of business will be a review for the minutes. We have three meetings that we have minutes for that have been distributed. First up is June 3, 2021. Have we all had a chance to review the minutes? The only correction that I saw, this is for the record, is on page 1, under Commission Business, we have a Mr. Bagorski, and it should be Bajorski. It should be B-A-J-O-R-S-K-I.
I'm not having it.
All righty, and that would be for the only correction on June 3. Does anyone else have any other comments?
Motion approved.
Yes, thank you, Tim. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Legnani. And further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, Mr. Miller, abstains. Okay, does move forward, does pass. Okay, thank you. June 17, the minutes for June 17. I reviewed them. I did not see any problem with them, but does anyone else have any comments with the way you're motion?
Yes, I'm listed as in attendance and as excused. I was not at that meeting.
And I went to look it up. I'm so sorry for that.
Okay, so you were excused for that meeting, correct, Mr. Zarabozo?
Yes, but I'm listed as attended, as both.
Okay, all right. Well, you know I'll be wish Samantha could do that at times. Never mind.
So, Commissioner Legnani, I also want to point out that Peter's last name is still wrong.
Oh, it should be the double Rs.
That's correct.
Good, so we'll make that correction as well. So, any other corrections of this? Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Rogan, motion to approve.
Okay, with the corrections, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Thank you. Further discussion, others in favor? Aye. So, okay, June 29. June 29, we had a special meeting. I did not see any issues on anyone else. Hearing done, do we have a motion?
Commissioner Wolman accepted minutes from the 29.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Second.
Senator Miller.
Okay, George, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. All right. And Tim, you're abstaining?
To make sure Rogan's standing as well.
All right, well, we have three. Do we have enough?
There's a simple majority. It's five minutes.
Okay, fine. All right, moving on. Okay, onto new business. Item A is a site plan amendment application of Christopher P. Kurnat Arghani Lagnin, Connecticut Incorporated for the expansion of an existing training yard, including electrical training equipment, three structures on concrete paths, gravel drive fencing, and associated stormwater improvements at EverSource Energy, 107 Selden Street. Okay.
Is it on the screen?
I can bring it up on the screen. Or do you have a separate? I have what you said.
Yeah.
Maybe it's an easier way to work out.
Evening. My name is Brian Phillips, the President and Chair. We are here on behalf of the Governor of Rocky County for the proposed project that 107 Selden Street. Maureen, is it?
Plans.
The plans, yes.
So, best talk to Steve soon about me emailing him, but that's who you are.
Great. Move on to page number four. Thank you. So, the existing site includes an EverSource Training Yard, which is to the left on this plan is the existing training yard. Our proposed project is included within an existing lawn area and some very light pine trees, not that thick vegetation. The proposal is to extend a gravel drive down to this new proposed training yard, which just includes additional electrical training equipment, three small shed-like structures, and some concrete pads. The entire area will be gravel ground cover and then proposing a small network of swales and yard trains to collect the stormwater and manage that. We're staying within the site's limited disturbance. We're not proposing anything beyond what is shown on this plan. And I guess if there are any additional questions, I can go into further detail if there's anything specific.
Commissioners? Do we have anything?
Commissioner Miller, I'm just having a hard time picturing where this is relative to that apartment complex that's supposed to be.
So, the apartment complex is, if we're looking at the plan on the screen, it's to the north, or plan north, true east.
So, it's at the top of the screen right there?
Yeah, I mean, the thing that was throwing me off is a single-family residential R-43. So, apartment complex is going in there, so.
It's the workforce housing zone was layer, is an overlay on the R-43 and OT zone. So, that zone now has the workforce housing zone over it. It's an overlay, but it is right along that property line, which is the history property line, but at the top of the screen where my cursor is right now.
The other question I had is, is this electrical training predominantly? So, bucket trucks, things like that in this zone, or just?
No. I can have someone file a petition.
I just want to understand, you know, that's fine. I just didn't know whether you, you know, were close to the apartment complexes, whether it's going to be a lot of machinery in there and so forth.
No, no large machinery.
Can I ask when the training will be occurring? I mean, once you're completed with the site, is it going to be like a 7 to 3?
Normal working daytime hours.
Okay, so is that like 7 to 3, or is that more like 8 to 4:30?
7 to 4.
All right, 7 to 4, okay.
7 to 3.
Okay, yeah, so it might fluctuate. Okay. Maureen, do you know if there's a buffer that exists between the proposed edge of that site to the residential?
So, I was going to give a little more of a description than the applicant has given. You can see on the drawing, and I don't know if you've read enough, but we have here an existing tree line that comes across here, and they show where they're cutting it back, just in this area. And from here, they're cutting it back to there. I guess they're cutting all the way back to this line?
No.
That's existing tree line already.
Correct. We are not disturbing any vegetation along that property line. The vegetation that's on our property, we're not disturbing anything on the eastern side. I guess, Maureen, if you wouldn't mind going to the CG 101, I think it's two sheets down. We have our grading and drainage plan, which... So, the top of the page there just shows the proposed contours. So, there is no existing vegetation within the area of we are proposing the training of it. All of that grading is 20 feet away from the property line. So, there is no, we're not proposing any disturbances about 15 to 20 feet away from the property line.
Okay. Just so, just so that I can actuate myself, where is like, I guess that's still Deming Road, right?
Correct. So, north is to the left of this plan. Deming Road is on the right side of this plan. It's not shown on this particular report.
Is it, is it currently set deep within that law?
If we go to page number two, my apologies. I think there's an overall site plan.
Yes, D2.
So, there's Deming Road, the intersection of. So, I believe, or that's.
Yeah. So, no, Selden is right there.
All right, yes.
This is Deming Road. Bacon is roughly across the street. Okay, there. So, this is the light, right? The lights up. And then this is the 75-foot step-back line on their property and going up the hill past, this is the pond in the area, right?
That's a wave wood, I wouldn't call it wood.
Oh, wood, yeah.
There's some trees right there. And then we're, you are holding, showing on this plan, the 50-foot side yard residential buffer, which we are staying outside of.
So, Maureen, meet all our setbacks, correct?
Yes, it meets the setbacks. The training facility will be enclosed. So, let me finish the description, just to give everybody the idea. If you come in that driveway off Deming Road as you proceed towards the main complex, the training facility that was approved in 2016 is here, and this is the next section of their property that's towards Deming Road from it. The proposal shows that they are extending the fencing from the existing training area to enclose this area, and this building along the meridally side is a control building. They asked questions. Will there be training with the control building? Or is the control building, like, are people going to be working on and around the control building? Or just within control?
Yeah, just to control the equipment.
To control the equipment, that's which I was going to point out seems to create a little bit of a buffering towards their activity area of where they're working, because that will be structured there. Then you asked me another question, sorry.
I noticed that this proposal goes into the 50-foot side yard, butting the residential. And the gravel is going around, almost up to the a control building. You know, so they're in that 50-foot residential butting area or buffer area. I don't think they should be in that upper area with any action to that building. And if they put gravel access to the back of that building, which I see on page... Sheet number five. Six. You can see the area that they're going to take action in. So, I don't think there's any action should be inside that thing. So, the backside of that control building is basically on the line of the buffer. So, when you think the other side, that chain link fence that says existing to be removed probably should go on the line of the buffer. Protect that buffer.
I may, can you tell me what sheet you were, you were on so that I can pull it up for everybody? Did you tell me the number?
Sheet number 1 of 6.
5 of 6, too. When you look at 5 of 6, I mean, if the area is going to be vertical within.
The buffer, the buffer's building. So, you started, you have crushed something around, crushed something around the back of the building. You just asked Maureen, she said they follow them, all the guidelines of the buffer.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure what I'm missing.
I think maybe buffer, if I used me correctly, this is a setback.
Setback, side yard setback. You're in, you're in, you're in the setback, though. You're going to have action in the setback. To eliminate that action in the setback, I would think that fence should go down the setback line.
Yeah, but is the building in the setback?
No, ceiling's not in the setback.
Well, yeah, but that's.
That's what the setbacks are for, buildings.
But I think, I always understood, I always understood that the setback was that way.
The setback's always.
I know you can't build, you can't build, but the setback is more above.
Tim, I don't want to ask Maureen, our expert, thanks. Good, Maureen.
So, in looking at the plans, the interpretation of the regulations has been that the setback is for buildings and parking and drives can occur in the setbacks in accordance with the parking and drives regulations. Probably by feet.
I understand where you're coming from, too, but I think.
We're trying to keep everything back from the residential, and that's what my, that's why I know.
I think if the building was.
There because of the residential, and we're going to have a residential over there. So, we do have a setback on the residential.
Yeah. I believe there would be more flexibility or discretion. If this was a special permit, this is a site plan application as opposed to a special permit in this zone. And that's, recently, you add those conditions, and that's your pleasure. But that typically would have to be something that can be done with a special permit more frequently.
Yes, okay, all right. Any other questions for the Commission? Mr. Wolman, Mr. Legnani, any questions? Brian, Mr. Zarabozo, any questions?
No questions.
No questions, okay. Well, can I entertain a motion? We have no other questions? Can I possibly entertain a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion for the approval of the site plan amendment for 107 Selden Street.
All right, we have a motion.
With standard conditions.
Right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner, any seconds.
All righty, thank you. Further discussion, and all those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, all those in favor, okay, so move.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Good luck. Okay. This is item B. It's a site plan amendment application of JLN Contracting Bureau of Policy, Pearson and Cassidy Engineering Associates Incorporated for a change of use for limousine service at an existing building at 76 Fuller Way to manufacture the cycle wheels for a company that manufactures high-end gear. Now, this is going to be very interesting. When I saw this, I have all sorts of questions popping in my head. I'm sure you're going to answer the long presentation.
If I may, I'm going to try to get his flashlight. I have to keep the mouse out of my computer because of the number of ports.
Okay.
To use his presentation, so. And so I will.
I was for a minute, you guys.
So, we're going to have a loose mouse.
Mouse on the loose.
I may have a mouse that doesn't work, and we may have to divert to black and white drawings.
Okay. It gives us a chance to get our stuff in front of us. And this is.
You can start without the pictures. You can start, but.
This is going to be a little, but for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, fresh engineer principal with PermaHouse, Pearson Cassidy, my office located at 630 Main Street, Prum. Here tonight represents SmartPete Tech, who is prospective tenant and developer for these property at 76 Fuller Way here in Berlin. With me tonight is John, wife of SmartPete Tech, in addition to a tech producer with me from JLN Contracting. The application was submitted by JLN. And that they're going to be the building contractor for the renovations to the existing building on this site. Put up greener. I'll give it one second. It's a little easier with maps and photos, otherwise I'll go to old school.
That's fine.
Bring up the boards, or worst case, I think Maureen also has said site plans that were submitted, so we can bring those up also. USP.
The top of?
Presentation, yeah.
Very good, Maureen. This mouse, the keypad is just not like me.
Okay, so this application is for a site plan modification to an existing building located at 76 Fuller Way. There is an existing building on the site. We also appear for a change of use on this site. As part of your package, there was an existing condition survey that was submitted. The site itself is own general industrial zone. It's approximately 113,353 or 2.6 acres of land. We're going to use, listen to the next slide, the leg, or next page. I'll let you zoom back in on it. That's good enough, that's good enough right there.
Zoom in or out?
Out on it. So, if anyone's familiar with 76 Fuller Way, this is Fuller Way headed in a northerly direction. If you go all the way down to the end of Fuller Way, it's on the end right northeast corner. Uh, if you go all the way down to the end of Fuller Way, it's on the end right northeast corner, this used to be the home of premier limousine. Uh, which is no longer on the property. Uh, the building, the site itself contains an existing one-story structure, uh, the structure has an area of about twenty four thousand nine hundred forty-seven square feet. Uh, you'll see that there's parking area off to the south or to the bottom of it, uh, this parking to the west, uh, or to the east, sorry. Um, and then also some additional parking up to the northwest corner, there actually is a total of one hundred thirty-four parking spaces on the site presently. Uh, obviously, the prior use was a limousine and transportation company, uh, so parking was premium to them. Uh, so over the years, the parking's kind of expanded, expanded, uh, ending up with one hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. Uh, off to the east or to the right, uh, you can see that the pond, uh, that's a portion of land that's owned by the town of Berlin. Uh, off to the north is the former landfill on the upper portion, uh, so that's also owned by the town of Berlin, to the bottom. Uh, there's a additional industrial building along Fuller Way owned by, I think, a super JV, uh, three LLC, uh, and then off to the west. Uh, there's an additional uh industrial building at the end of the cul-de-sac, um, so we are at the very end of the cul-de-sac. Presently, there are two driveway curb cuts on the site, uh, the one to the southerly parking lot. That provides access all the way to a driveway that's conferences around the back portion of the site. Uh, and then there's a little connection up at that northeasterly corner coming down that north side. On that north side, you can't see the photo, which is presently a series of loading docks. Um, that are what we call drop docks, uh, so it's a four-foot drop. And then the driveway continues around servicing an additional parking area at the northwestly corner with another driveway curb cut out of Fuller Way. Uh, there was a connection made between that parking lot and the front parking lot, accommodating additional parking spaces along the front. As I stated, um, previously, uh, the use was uh transportation, a limousine company. Uh, was proposing to go in here at this point, uh, is the company called Smart V Tech, uh, Smart V Tech is manufacturer of. And to, I'm going to give you a guess, a pre-digest description, uh, if we were experts to explain a little further, that's later Jonathan Fife here this evening. But basically what happens is, uh, if there's uh food products in grocery stores, restaurants, uh, that's inspired for human consumption. So it's still good, uh, but it's inspired for human consumption, they need to do something with it. They take it to this facility, uh, through a series of bins, uh, is loaded, uh, into a series of loading docks, uh, or if you can, this goes to the next slide. Uh, this is a proposed site plan. One more, sorry, that's my site demo plan. So this is the proposed site plan, uh, so now your orientation is, uh, the left-hand side would be to the north, uh, and then the right-hand side would be to the south. Um, so what happened, uh, is along the north side, there's gonna still be a search loading docks, uh, the product is brought in through those doors into the facility. Uh, in the facility, uh, is processed, and basically what has happened is it's it's heated up, uh, it's basically baked. Uh, dried out, uh, made into a grain or or powder substance, uh, and once it's dried out, uh, it's. Uh, unloaded or offloaded, uh, back to trucks, uh, on the backside of the building, and then carry out to whatever supplier they need to supply. So all the processing of the product incurs entirely within the structure, there's nothing stored outside, uh, there's no products that are stored outside. Uh, in addition to, as I mentioned, uh, the product that's coming in, uh, it is, uh, it is. Could be consumed by humans, it's not a spoiled product, uh, it's just, it's a day beyond, uh, it's expiration date. Uh, Smart V Tech would go out to, um, the different vendors that they need to take a product from or on a daily basis, uh, they bring it in here and then store it inside. Uh, as part of the site plan modification that we're looking for, uh, a couple of things are happening. Uh, to the rear or to the upper portion of the site, like, you'll see this one rectangular area with two, uh, like she runs pointing towards it. Uh, we need to construct a weigh scale, uh, for vehicles coming in, coming out. Uh, that's the location that we're proposing at this point. Uh, there might be a slight modification to it right now, that weigh scale is like patterns, but it's elevated about fourteen inches on the ground, so the she runs you see. Are basically, uh, ramps leading up to it, uh, but we're also looking at possibly doing one that could be suppressed into the ground, so the only way it happened. Uh, is the footprint is slightly smaller, uh, but it all is within a system parking area. This location is not basically put in there, uh, to accommodate the largest vehicle that could possibly maneuver, uh, to the back of that site, being a W sixty-seven, a wheelbase sixty-seven. Uh, tractor trailer, um, so that that's forcing its location, uh, in addition to, uh, off to the north or to the left of it. Uh, we're gonna reconfigure the pavement area around that corner of the building, uh, present the pavement's very tight to the corner. Uh, it'd be a little bit problematic to make a turn maneuver with this present configuration, so we're pushing it out a little bit, uh, so that darker gray area is a new section of payment. Uh, there is an existing area of payment in there, in addition to, wherever Warren has a hand right now, uh, you'll see two smaller trucks. Uh, those are the trucks that we've been bringing in the product, uh, there's gonna be two new overhead doors in that location, uh, so they'll be able to load the product right into the building. Uh, from that location, uh, we also need to let driveway far enough to accommodate those trucks, those would be single unit trucks. Um, so therefore, the driveway was a little tighter in the area. The other thing I'll know is you'll notice, uh, in that area, you're gonna notice two, uh, lighter green areas. Uh, those are existing areas that they were presently using for parking, uh, it's either a paved surface or it's a gravel surface up near the pond. Uh, those areas would be reclaimed, uh, basically the material will be removed, uh, they'll be regraded and they'll be topsoil seeded, uh, with amendments, uh, so it's going to be enhanced in that area. More importantly, uh, as I mentioned, uh, when you take a look at the, uh, existing property, you'll see several pavement patches out there. So what's happened over the years, unfortunately, islands, landscape islands within the parking area, they filled into a comedy parking. Uh, presently, uh, not presently, your regulations require, uh, that there's a minimum of fifteen percent of landscape area provided within the parking area. Site doesn't presently meet that requirement, so what we are also proposing is if you look at the front area of the site, I have some darker green areas. Uh, based upon our calculations, um, within the parking area, we need to have a total of about three thousand six hundred seventy square feet of landscape violence. Uh, those green areas that you see, uh, after removing pavement for the landscape islands in would accommodate, and there are about three odd, about three six hundred, uh, square feet. So we're drastically increasing, uh, landscape area within the parking lot. I'll also know, as I mentioned previously, there are one hundred thirty-four parking spaces on this site, um, per your zoning requirements, uh, being a manufacturer of use. Uh, we're only required to have one space for five hundred square feet, only requiring us to have a total of fifteen spaces for this facility. We're actually bringing a part of our parking spaces proposed down to fifty-nine, so we're actually cutting in half, uh, with what's out there. Uh, so overall, uh, it seems that it's going to be a drastic improvement, um, to the same situation that's out there today. Uh, modifications to the building, um, the torn of the building is remaining the same, this, in our next slide. So this is the zoning table, I'll go over that later. So we went over all the zoning requirements, uh, in the general industrial zone, uh, we have listed what's required, uh, I won't go through each individual one. And all cases we need to see, uh, as I mentioned previously, uh, we actually are improving some of the situations. Uh, such as maximum impervious coverage, uh, right now, this site is slightly over, it's a one point five percent. Uh, by removing the pavement on the back corner, and also landscape islands, we're actually bringing down to seventy nine point four percent. Uh, so that's one thing that's actually being improved for us, that's not performing right now. Uh, I'll note also, uh, if you look at the rear of the site, there is the pond, uh, we need to go out and locate the pond, uh, to confirm. That any activity we have on the site is beyond the hidden footprint area of the town, therefore, we do not need a wellness permit, uh, as part of this application. You go to the, really morning? Go next one, right there. Okay, so the building footprint is staying exactly the same as it is today, there are no additions to the building footprint. Okay, that's perfect. Um, so this is the floor plan for the building, uh, the modification that needs to be made for the building is there are two sections of roof that need to be raised. Uh, this is to accommodate the equipment that needs to go inside, uh, for the processing of, uh, the pet food. Uh, those two sections are highlighted in blue on this plan, uh, total area, approximate area of the size of forty eight hundred square feet of the whole twenty four hundred square, twenty four thousand square foot building. Um, so about twenty percent in the building. Those, if you take a look at this building, your orientation for this floor plan is the bottom is faces, faces fuller road. Uh, the top is obviously the rear portion that faces towards the the scale, uh, to move the next portion. So in that area, the roof would be raised, uh, the equip, the drying equipment would be put in that area. So if you look at it in elevation, uh, the top is the is the existing elevation. Uh, it's, to me, it's actually, uh, they clean up the side of it, it's a rather attractive building presently, uh, so we're leaving the front side basically alone. Uh, but the, those back portions would have to be raised, um, the present height of that building is about nineteen feet. Uh, the back portion would have to go to about forty feet to accommodate it. It would be constructed of similar vertical building siding on the upper portion, uh, as presently exists on the building. Uh, but that will be back off the roadway, uh, in addition to on the middle left. Um, I'm sorry, middle right foot, oh, that's the area that's facing the loading dock. In that area, you can see that there are two higher branch doors, uh, those doors are to accommodate those vehicles, actually, uh, loading product are coming. Uh, into that section of the building, so they hire doors in that building. Um, so what we're looking for this evening again is a modification, uh, to the existing site plan for this site. Uh, and also, uh, a permission, uh, for the change of use, so with that, I conclude my presentation. Hopefully, answering questions or any of the team that are with us, like, answer any questions you may have.
Okay, terrific, thank you, uh, commissioners, do we have any questions? I'm gonna ask for Brian and Peter, I know that you're online with us, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Rogan, I have no questions.
Commissioners, there are both, so I do not have any questions.
I do have a question, if you're online, only because it's a very interesting concept you have, so. Do these groceries or restaurants, do they contact you and tell you, hey, we have a pickup for you, and you send a truck out, I mean, how how does that work? And is it canned goods, or is it like cabbage and?
No, so you want to keep on, John?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to come up to a little more about the operations.
I I'm just more curious than anything else.
Yeah. Um, so. Uh, Jonathan Fife, um, it's Murphy Tech.
Okay.
Uh, so we, um, reach out to, uh, with our marketing team, to restaurants, supermarkets, industrial food producers. Um, and, uh, we work with them, we set up a schedule for, uh, you generally pick up every day, and so we go to their facility, we pick up. Um, and bring it back to our facility when everything is, uh, brought inside the building. Um, so fully enclosed, but it's it's basically we've got scheduled pickup time every day.
Okay, and everything is sorted right there, and it's all processed right there.
That's right.
I mean, there's no contaminants available or critters or.
Yeah, it's all inside the building.
Yeah, I mean, I, when I first saw this application, I mean, my mind went in all these different directions, you know, you see the movies. So I just, I I just, I wanted to have a better understanding of what the business is, and I, I guess I just never thought that there would be a need for it, I guess there is. Yeah, I know, I I never thought about where, uh, can.
Yeah, no, we're, uh, they were working with, uh, actively with the Department of Environmental Protection, they're very supportive of. Uh, the project, they they see that, uh, more generally, there's a lot of very high quality food that's nutritious, and they have two main objectives, the first is to prevent. Any food from not being consumed in the first place, um, so how can we divert it to humans? Uh, and the second is animals, and so we're taking some of that high quality food that's still good, we're, um, we process it at our at our facility and. Uh, we're, they're, uh, looking to give us a a beneficial use permit, so they're looking at, uh, something that is, um. Uh, we're taking something that could have been waste and we're processing it. Um, and just preventing it from going to the waste stream, so they're very favorable to that.
I'm giving it a second life, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, terrific, thank you for that, I just, uh, I just wanted to clarify, um, anyone else?
I'll look, this commissioner Miller, I'm just curious, do you have other facilities already in operation?
Uh, this is our first.
This is your first?
Yeah.
Wow.
The technology's all proven, as other people are doing this type of processing?
Yeah, there are, uh, other, um, competitors, the technology's proven, we're. Um, we also have a partnership with, um, professors from Boston College of WPI, our. Uh, our mission is to make, uh, our process as energy efficient as possible, so we're partnered with, uh, one leading. Flying institutes in the country, and we're, um, looking to develop technology to, uh, further, um, to to further, uh, improve, uh, our process and make it more efficient. Um, and environmentally friendly, hence why we're working so closely with the Department of Environmental Protection.
You know, and and just one other question, if I may, um, when you do this processing, obviously, you're doing work in a contained area, there's gonna be ventilation, and there's no. Odors or fumes that's gonna be expelled from the building, um, because of the processing that would maybe approach on other businesses or?
Hey, that's no different than, uh, any food process, so we have a dryer.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh. Um, uh, we we cook the food and ultimately dry it, but there's, uh.
There's nothing going into the, no fumes or odors, you know, coming out of the building from the exhaust fans during the process. That might contaminate the.
No, no, if you're looking for not, not just odors, no.
Yeah.
But I mean. Your cooking product.
Oh, yeah.
I don't equate it.
Oh.
You know, there's there's scrubbers, but it's almost like a restaurant, so.
I know, some Italian restaurants are kind of way far past, it's like wonderful. All right, fine, that's, it's the coffee I had. Anyone else? Tim, yes, please. Save me too.
I wanna put a clear eye on it, working in the building for over nine years, and, uh, I know the property very good, uh, long time built up. Now, I see that the, uh, red dot line on top of page three. Uh, is. Water water cars, uh, line basically, uh, in my, in my wetlands, uh. Uh, town of Berlin. And that did once upon a time intrude onto this property, that you see that red dot.
Yeah, so the the red dot line you're referring to is on the fifty-four regulated area from the pond.
That's the regulated area.
Regulator pond. Yes, the existing parking lot is within that area, but anything we're doing on the site, we're outside the areas, we have no activities going on in that fifty-four regulated.
So you go eliminate that.
It's outside the fifty-four.
Parking area inside that.
Very, very carefully, you'll notice that we jumped right up to it and that, that line, uh, we're not going beyond that fifty-four.
There was a lot of, couple more feet, couple more feet, you know, for parking, you know, and I think you grabbed most of it. Now, the, uh, CMP lines coming through, uh, you're going to be going on there.
Presently, there, there's a driveway on the backside that presently goes on to the east.
Right.
It's already, it already goes underneath that.
That goes on it, yes. But I don't think it's permitted on it, but thus, that it wasn't approved by, uh, the, like.
There was a separate site plan improvement, I think there was a prior site plan that approved it.
Not that far, but, uh, in into the the east, but, oh, I just want, I'm just telling you for your.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Knowledge, okay, because it was filled in, filled in, filled in, and pushed and pushed, okay? I'm glad you put the grass back in, I'm glad you grabbed most of the, the, the problem, uh, but. I know when I was there, uh, like company, that line right there was pretty forceful now. And then over the years. Just happened. Okay, I just want to warn you that sometimes maybe the life of it's gonna say, hey, can you do my art? Right, okay, uh, because it's there, it's been existing for probably ten years or more. But, uh, something you should know, if you purchase in this building. But I'm really glad that you be doing the part, like, take some of that part, please. But I'm really glad that you'd be doing the part, like, take some of that part place though.
For reference, I just pulled up the existing conditions screen and that may.
Yeah.
This year, I've completed the parking, the parking spaces that are being removed.
Yes.
And the gravel area that I can't get my person to go over to. On the upper left side, that has been encroached as gravel and they will be on their plan.
The pro, the pro.
Showing where.
On the east end.
Actually shows better on that site.
It's something that wasn't. Just, just pushed. I know. I pushed it.
Yeah, so if you blow up in that area, you can see. That only ground loads an encouragement on there, so we're actually pulling that back.
Yeah. You know, because I don't want you to see, see a, a nice business come into a problem over there because of some.
Yeah.
So.
I do have one last question, only because I, I don't think we discussed it, do we have a dumpster on site?
So we talked about that earlier today. All the, all the product, we've product exactly inside the building.
Yeah.
As you moved on, as, as the basis. The only other thing would be office waste paper, whatever. We have talked about, I mentioned that this could come up, we probably should accommodate a six cubic yard dumpster on the site someplace. My proposal would be you put it at that far north end of the site, far on the site, it's possibly can across from the loading docks.
Yeah.
So we, as a condition of approval, we can, we can definitely add it. All we need is a small six cubic yard, certain office area in the building is minimal. All other waste such as wrapping, so on and forth are payment with the building. Once the payers' hole, service is called, they take them out, so there's no other crap or waste stored outside.
Yeah, all right, but you'll, you'll step on five lines in that, okay, yeah, just, just something, pardon me, we didn't talk about that.
The other thing I would bring up is we did receive staff comments. Staff comments were, I would say, pretty minimal. The last set of comments we received today, the only ones that anything needs to be added to. Were the, well, this enforcement officer made direct, sorry, the recommendation that we add product is called the Yantech filter to the campus.
Yeah.
So. Agreement with that. The final comment was the additional comment is added today from constipation condition. They were asking in provide a couple spaces on the site. Allow for your members or the public department to be able to access to the pond that showed to the rear property. I talked to the client, it's a great idea, this is, we're running. The only problem we have is we don't know what liability is, but the insurance company, we need to go through that, so. We can work with town staff on that, we'll try to make it happen, but we can't, we have to work on a liability issue. Because you do have trucks circumference in the site, so, you know, we gotta be careful.
Yeah.
But we sound like a grid, and obviously if we couldn't, we'll accommodate it, you can't commit to it right now.
All right, we received an additional comment right at the end of that, after Fred had left, so she didn't get to send it to you. The remove or restore and restore the parking lot encroachment on the town of Berlin property along the North of the boundary.
The same thing. Small section on the far north, it was beyond, so it'd be the same thing. Obviously, it's the same area that removes.
Yeah, it's way down. Right here in this area.
Okay.
All right, and there is what appears to be a faucet there.
Used to like home.
A like home.
There is a.
It's like a faucet, so we were talking.
There is a dump station there. The bus is just dumping and there's a faucet right out. Okay, then you probably have to watch out when you're digging back there. Inside the building is a dump station too, that is pumped right to the city sewer. I don't know if that's right. But, you know, like I said, I just wanna, I'm not.
I agree.
I think it's a great idea that you guys are using this building. Okay, but when you get into it, I don't want you to get in there and find stuff. You're putting up second large door in the rear of the building or left hand side of the building. It's going to be drive into the building type door like the best they're already.
Yes, yeah, those two large doors are provided.
And the other side of the building, there was two doors.
They would remain.
They would remain, but they go be ended up like truck docks now or?
They are still truck docks, so they're.
Yeah.
So they're inaccessible by the larger truck, it would be accessible like this to the truck.
Okay.
Right. Russell, I'll entertain a motion if no one else has any questions or comments.
Commissioner Rogan?
Yes, Brian?
I'll make the motion to approve with staff and town comments. And hopefully they're able to work with their insurance to try and get those lots. But I understand that that is something that can get complicated, so not gonna make that condition, but hope for the best.
And the dumpster too, George, that, that's included in your staff comments, the dumpster. Okay. All right, do we have a second?
Second, I'm sure we did.
Okay, thank you. And for the discussion, from all those candidates, I.
I.
Elizabeth. Brian and Peter, just that.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, thank you, just want to make sure I get your eyes on the record.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you two having a great business.
Glad to see you.
Yes, yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to the public hearings and we had a call here. Do you need to call for a public hearing?
Yeah.
We can read that, okay, if they not, I don't think he come back for you. We'll see.
He's stuck in the plastic.
I know, I'm sorry, so you say Brian?
Yes.
Come today, I know we have Ryan control. Yeah, you're in big.
Want to read this?
You are a big deep doo doo, my friend. Okay, so the call to the public hearing, all right, the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at its regular meeting on Thursday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven o'clock in the evening at the Berlin Town Hall. Two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting, participate in a public hearing in person or remotely or by video, by phone, as provided below. Then there are the instructions. The following public hearing will be held, at which time an opportunity will be given to those who wish to be heard relative to the following applications. A, special permit site plan amendment, application of Merrill McKenzie. Truck R two LLC, a recreational center at one one nine Webster Square Road. Applications and related media materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Commission, at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlin Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. And this is submitted on the second of July, twenty twenty one, by Brian Rogan, the Secretary for Urban Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Chairperson, Miss Amelia Reddick Law. Okay, so. Here we go, we have the Truck Bar, Truck Bar two. That's a very interesting name, I'm sure you have an interesting story with this public hearing, so.
Thank you very much, my name is Merrill McKenzie, eleven eighty three Killenworth Road, Hagan, Connecticut. And before I get started, just a small world kind of interesting note. Twelve years ago, I think twelve, thirteen years ago, I came before. This room and asked for a business to be granted, it was a small fitness studio. Just down the road from where we're going to put it, hopefully going to put in the truck park. And secondarily, I used to work for Premier Fitness Museum, so it's a really small world, kind of all coming back to me tonight.
Wow.
That's scary, ain't it?
It is a little scary.
It's a small one.
So in reality, the business name is the Truck Bar. We're just, we, we created an LLC called the Truck Bar two, just so we could track it all. There'll be eventually a Truck Bar three, yada, yada, yada. So it is a family entertainment concept based around the sport of cornhole, I'm sure some of you are familiar with that. We have an existing facility in Hagan, Connecticut. We opened up in the middle of COVID and, you know, observed all the restrictions we needed to, but even with that, proved very popular. We're suffering a little bit now, with the nice weather's promise, but it comes back around with the fall. It was so popular that I decided we need to expand upon the concept, make it bigger, add some features to it. So that's what I'm here before you today to try to get back.
Okay. Um, do we have any material that you're gonna put up on the screen and share with the?
Yeah.
All right, start it.
This is second, I can do.
She's getting used to doing herself now, so.
That's going up by having Adam.
I know.
I'm gonna hand all of these sets down to you. This is the proposed outdoor seating area adjacent to ours.
Oh, okay, you are gonna do something.
We hope to, yes. So there's a picture and a schematic of what we're trying to do.
I have no idea, it's a new commissioner. Another option.
Okay, you can have this couple off your way then.
How many copies? Here guys, did you get a copy?
Oh, no. Thanks, John.
All right, I can look at these now? All right, okay.
Make sure that we keep one set, please, so that I have it, thank you. And now it should be on the screen, Commissioner Rogan, maybe you'll confirm that you can see it on the screen, the floor plan?
Yes, I can see it, I also have it in my packet, so.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, I think I said all I had to say.
That's all you have to say, okay.
And if you have any questions, I mean, I'm gonna answer them.
All right, I see a picture of three trucks in there, so I'm just. Got, you've got the entrance here and then you've got some tables, so then you have the lineup for the games. You have one, two, ten, like a bowling alley with lanes.
Very similar.
Now you have a, you have a pickup truck right there?
Dead center.
Before you get to the dance floor?
Yes, so the theme of the Truck Bar is old trucks. And that's one of the things that I, I think has grabbed so much attention for us, is that there's infinity for a large amount of people for. Classic vehicles and in particular trucks, so we use them as props, indoor decorations throughout the place. Various furniture made out of trucks, the band stage, there you can see dead center on the right side wall. Is actually gonna be built partially on top of two coal, coal trucks, cab over engine trucks. And it's one of the things, that plus a lot of gas mobility. That I think has resonated with a lot of people, so that's why there's trucks inside the space.
Okay, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have pizza area here, is this just basically pizzas and some sandwiches?
So we have a company we contracted with called Square Pay Pizza, they're out of Boston, Mary. And they're named Pizza Company Woodfire. And so we've tasked them with creating the menu and, I, I think they have ten items on their menu in Boston, Mary. But still be doing here, hence the seating area to the left of the pizza. That would, if granted, spill out into the outdoor seating area.
Okay, and where's the outdoor seating doors?
Right there, yeah. And that's under the overhang of the space, if you're familiar with the plaza, it has a significant overhang for weather. And we're proposing putting our seating well with times that. Still in plenty of walkroom.
And, and so you're just proposing three tables there?
I think it's a generic kind of table, it could be more, it could be less, depends on what the space allows and how big the tables are. But I mean, we're not going any bigger than, yeah, I think eighteen by fifteen. Space that's there, the idea is that we're gonna put up a roll up glass garage door, kind of like a gas station. And then bring that outdoor theme kind of feeling, it's a really popular thing in, in restaurants and bars, that's why we're suffering so bad in all our locations. Because we don't have an outdoor ability, so having something where people can out, sit outside and, you know, and enjoy a breeze. Feel like they're outside while they're inside kind of works well with, with the business concept.
So the outdoor seating would actually be, outdoor seating would actually be in front of the building?
Correct.
So.
And then, and then what you're gonna do is where the sidewalk ends, that's where you're gonna put a couple of garage doors right next to the parking lot, don't you say?
No, no, the garage door is gonna be in the same glass facade that has.
Into the main structure?
Into the main structure.
Thank you.
If I may, it's proposed to replace the existing storefront window in that area.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, is this the last, this is the last building, I, I'm remembering the plaza correctly before we have it, where the old Woolworths used to be, how it's all blackened and.
This is the theater.
This is, this used to be the old.
It used to be the old theater.
Yeah, the theater started, yes.
I'm familiar with it as the old billiards place that was there.
The old billiards.
I actually played pool there once in a while.
Yeah, and then before it was the theater, but okay, I'm just trying to, okay, so.
Way back when I was a little kid, it was a theater, and then after the Woolworth, then the Woolworth fire happened, the theater had to close. And then you, few, a lot of years later, the billiards.
Yeah.
Bar, I think it was like, it's just a billiards place and bar, right?
Yes, correct.
That opened up and then that eventually closed and it's been.
Big insight.
Thank you for a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a good thing that someone's actually coming to us, so thank you for coming in.
My pleasure, thank you, we're excited, I think it's a, it's a home run as far as location, right off the highway. You got the theater that's now starting to come back and see business. It's kind of a depressing plaza at the moment because it has nothing in it, but we're hoping to turn that around. A friend of mine who actually owns Sid Fitness, there's a couple doors down, he used to be one of my coaches, I had my fitness studio way back when. So he went out and did his own thing, he made a really nice fitness center over there. But yeah, we're, we're excited to be there, I think, and centrally in the state, it's perfect.
Yeah.
So I, there's a lot of good synergies there for us.
Now, the open area that used to be the old Woolworths, what happens with that, is that?
Well, I guess that's up to the landlords, they, they have no plan that I'm aware of unless some big retailer comes in and decides they want the space. Who knows, maybe down the road I can take it from them, but.
Well, is there gonna be, is there an option or a possibility that you might be able to extend your outdoor seating in that direction? Can that be behind it?
Not now, it would, it probably would require significant work on their part because it's outside, I don't mind that, that concrete pad is overgrown now, and I don't know what it would take. Take it right in, I don't even know if the landlord is conducive to, to having anything that large outside, but I personally, long term, would love to have. At least a portion.
Right.
But I want to get in and be a good citizen to that first.
If you want to do something outside, they're showing the fun, the fun hub.
Now. Oh, jeez, now, the other question I have is that you have party rooms and you have a bar in the back of the facility. Where is it on the park, is there gonna be alcohol, is it gonna be beer, wine, or?
Yeah, so beer, wine, cider, mixed drinks, all of them served in cans only, so we don't do any mixing. We don't have any tanks, it's literally like accepting a bottle that goes with PepsiCo and that's our bar.
Yeah.
That is going to be a faux Sinclair gas station, and so the design, I'm assured. So in our current location, we, we built an old barn facade and recessed coolers in there and there's an old truck right next to it that has coolers in it. And we decided that we're really gonna go deep into the whole Truck Bar theme, a similar gas station, and really, I got an eight foot green diner, dinosaur in my garage. Just waiting to come out, go on top of this thing, but yes, so where that U shape is, it's just a rough reference.
Yeah.
Where the bar is going to be. And then to the left of it will be the birthday party rooms. And birthday party rooms can be good for any age, you could be eight years old, you could be eighty years old, and then in between, we see all of that now in our current location.
Okay.
What's missing in our current location is, is food, so we're really, really happy to have the pizza component.
Okay, and then as far as the arcade area, is that gonna be all pinball machines?
I'll mix it in, as soon as you might see in a Dino Buster's. Cool tables, large video games, pinball machines, classic arcade games, skee ball, skee ball for sure, there's one in our current location now.
Sometimes you, uh, pinball machines get a little loud, that's the only reason, and that's a pretty open space.
Driving machines, isn't it?
Well, yeah, then you're talking about sixteen thousand square feet there, so, you know, we're gonna make it raucous and loud and fun for everybody, but I, I don't think a few pinball machines beside would, uh. Really add to the din in there anymore than somebody screaming, yeah, when they get a board.
Yeah, okay. That's all the questions I have, but this is a public hearing, so. All right. All right, boring, you have, hold on, boring, so I just have a few things for the record.
Okay.
Maybe a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, oh.
Uh, so, oh. You know, still in public. Um, given the name, for the record, bars and cafe liquor permits are not permitted um, by the zoning regulations, however, as explained, and staff understand liquor permit would be part of the restaurant category of liquor permits, and regardless would be subject to ZBA, liquor location approval. So, so you'll have to apply to the ZBA before alcohol could be served.
Yeah.
And follow through those regulations.
Do we have to come back here to this?
To the zoning board of appeals, which is a different board.
So.
If you're in same office, come to my office, we'll explain it all to you.
Yeah, you'll mark through it.
Provided, yeah. Yeah. They, um, and you, you alluded to the similar amusement facility being approved in the same location. Um, a few years ago, there is this, they did extend out to that vacant area between the two buildings that were left in the Plaza, and you'll know on the plan that there is a tenant space also in between, so. But, but he does have a door to outside, to the back, right? Outside door to the back on that side, so, you know, I just wanted to point that out, so everybody understood what, you know. Um, the Health District did have plan review comments that were distributed, um, as did the building official. Um, the town engineer today submitted no comment. On both the Health District and Building Department plans go with permit plans, you know, they're saying what's required for their permitting. Um, town engineer, no comment, signage will require zoning review, approval and permitting. And the commission noted for the last amusement facility that the parking was sufficient, um, staff would support the same um, conclusion here at Mixed Juice Plaza that has existing parking, it's kind of large. Or at least.
And um, so uh, before I go to the public, I'll ask the commissioners here, or online, if there are any questions, Mr. Miller.
Commissioner Miller, just, just a couple of things, I noticed, I, I just did a quick browse of your other sites. Is your plant here have regular hours all week long, I mean, you have limited hours right now, Hagan? We have limited hours, Hagan, I own the building there, uh, and because I own the building, it was a smart play to open a business there. But Hagan is a town of five thousand people, uh, so people don't come during the week like they would in a larger metropolitan area, which is why I'm branching out. Uh, typically, we run a couple days of weeks during the week now, um, and there's a summer break on that. When we come back into the fall, Tuesdays, Thursdays, we run weeks down there, and we're also hoping technically for any private events that might wanna come. Uh, but our plan is to run probably a Tuesday through Sunday schedule.
Second question, no axer?
I would love to, um, I own a bunch of axer places within the state, and uh, it would certainly help bring more people to it, but the owners are not amenable to putting axer for some reason. Uh, they're very conservative in that regard, so they don't allow me total.
What'd you say, the hours of operation, what are you proposing?
Uh, at the moment, it's subject to change, um. I, I don't know what the requirement of, of the square peg, so guys, they might wanna be open for lunch. If, if that's the case, they will be open earlier, but for our purposes, we are thinking probably four to ten, four to eleven, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday night. On Friday, it would be four to one AM, or PM to one AM. Um, Saturday would be one PM to one AM. And on Sunday, one PM to eight PM.
Just for the record, my kids say square peg.
Okay, let's put you on.
Yeah, I, I think.
Good?
My first endorsement.
We got pizza.
And now I'm going to go to the public to see if there's anyone online who wish, who has any comments, uh, either, or just feedback regarding this application, here would be the time to address the commission with your consent.
I don't believe there's anyone.
There's no commission members online. Oh, okay, well, I thought I had somebody there before, but that's okay. Alright, um, and Brian and Peter, did you have any questions for the applicant?
I am all set, Commissioner Rogan.
Okay.
Commissioner Zerbozo, I do not.
All set, okay.
I have one more item.
Oh, yes, okay, one more.
This half part of my sentence, which is that the outdoor seating out in front of the um facility on the um on the existing sidewalk that traverses the Plaza, I would just um ask that a condition be that it not inhibit the pedestrian flow.
Okay, and then what do you have any last?
Leave space for, for passerby.
There's no dur, well, no, I wasn't thinking about durm maybe part of.
Yeah, there's, I need to get some plans for that.
Okay, alright, good, alright, just like, you know, because if somebody's sitting out there, I don't wanna feel like they're sitting in the park and eating, you know, I mean, I wanna.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna make it as attractive to our customers as we can.
Okay, yeah, you want people to say, wow, what's happening?
I'm glad to hear someone.
I heard they have good pizza.
Someone say about the location, it's so great a location, you know, between eighty-four and ninety-one.
Right there.
Round drops off.
We've got the uh, the promo hurdle. It really is central, and coming out back to twenty-two.
Center of the state.
Okay.
Couldn't be much better, and we're a regional drive, people now coming from New York, Massachusetts, to our sleepy little town in Hagan to come to that space.
Waking up, Tom.
Waking up, but, so when, when, when we build this one, it's gonna truly be something special. And I think you're gonna get people from all, all corners of the state and out of the state to come.
Well, we are in the public hearing, and any other questions, or what's flavor of the commission?
I want you to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Tim, do we have a second?
Commissioner Wohlman, second.
Alright, thank you, um, Steve, and for the discussion, and all those in favor of closing the public hearing, I?
I.
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so, so, onto the old business, which is the same as the new business, special permit site plan application of Merle McKenzie for the Truck Bar Two LLC for the Recreation Center at one nineteen Webster Square Road. Alright, so we've heard the applicant has answered our questions, we've got input, uh, what's the flavor of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve this permit for the Truck Bar Two LLC, subject to staff comments, and also related to um, upstate seating, that it not inhibit pedestrian walkway um, out from.
Yep, okay, terrific.
Commissioner Miller, second.
Alrighty, thank you for the discussion, and all those in favor, I?
I.
As this is a public hearing, can I take a roll?
Okay, yes, as it's a public hearing, Maureen just advised me that Ryan reminded me we have to do this as a roll call, so. Listen up.
George Miller?
I.
Uh, Timothy Sigma?
I.
Brian Rogan?
I.
Steve Wulman?
I.
Peter Zerbozo?
I.
Andrew Lynamany?
I.
And Chairman Gilly?
I.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Welcome.
Alright, welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, hopefully in a few more years, I'll open another something.
Yeah, tell that dinosaur almost has a home.
So close, so close, but the best part now is I get my plans, the building plans done, and hopefully within the month, we can actually start turning it around.
Cool.
Congratulations, thank you so much, thank you.
You need to turn that.
I'll be looking for that ribbon cutting. Alright, onto the commission business discussion, uh, nine forty-five Farming Good Avenue, exterior modi- modifications, nine forty-five.
So this is.
This is the Lavenias. Alright, did we ever get in touch with the um historical society, because this is on the register, I believe.
Um, I don't believe anything, any um, buildings outside of the historic district. I thought it was, however, I did bring it up at a historic district commission meeting on Monday night, and they have no objection or comment.
Okay.
You know, we thought that was my most likely mean, you know, brightening, brightening the building was a positive thing. Um, just for the record, noting that in your packets, you will receive the letter from our economic development director uh, explaining that um this uh, the, the new occupant of the building, which was the end new um, retail store called Bungalow on the Avenue, um, it basically wants to paint the outside, spruce it up a bit um, color, um, I'll just remind everyone, it's not um, subject to review, except it is to recommendations, you know, can always be made to applicants, so.
So which is the owner going, the lease here or this?
I believe the same owner still owns the entire thing. Well, the only thing I didn't notice, a new transaction, but I didn't look for one here.
The only footnote that I have on a personal level is that all of uh, my life and my family's life, and we always knew this as the Red Barn, we were going to the seed and grain place for the chickens and, and all the other creatures that were on farm. So, I mean, it's, I mean, I understand that they wanna update it, and we're looking to do some historical gray, but boy, will I be sad that Red Barn is gone, because I won't be able to say, oh, don't go by the Red Barn. Because everyone knows that building. Alright, but that's my only feedback, other than that, I'm glad it's having life, and it's gonna be cared for.
You know, especially they, they do that white trim, takes that old building out, you know, uh, they make sure that they do all those ones with the wider board, or whatever, I think they are already.
Is there any new white?
Yeah, the, the bottom ones, the white ones, with the white border, but the top ones, maybe they put a little border on them, but uh it's something that sticks it out, the white borders.
Yeah.
That if they could be convinced to do that, that'd be great.
Yeah. Alright, other than that, Brian or Peter, do you have any input on this?
No, I just think, yeah, I'm in agreement, uh, I think actually that the grayish-blue color that they show in the rendition, uh, I think that'll look really nice with the stone base and with the new uh, Kennedy Village project that's going in behind it, I think it'll all work all together.
Yeah, alright, Peter, anything?
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Peter's got nothing today, I'm just, you're disappointing me every turn here, Peter. Okay, um, anyone else? So, do you need any kind of stamp?
No, that was more of an FYI, it was in the design district, so we wanna bring it to your attention in case the commission has some comments to make.
And then the last item is discussion of three oh one, brilliant, fight the planting, so I feel so sorry, this guy planted all those plants and now that it just puts down.
It can't survive a winter that close to the fall, so.
Well, you don't wanna put this.
And you can't keep making a guy plant though.
No, I know, I mean, well, he is making some suggestions
Yes.
and he wants to do it, and I think he, he built a really nice complex, so um, he has our blessings, I was saying. What does the commission think, he has our blessing to go?
I guess, I would ask does he need to do it, I mean, does he think he has to do it?
Until, uh, so.
It does he need to do it?
For the commission members to, I don't think.
For your time to there.
For the, for that decision.
Pardon?
Um, the decision might have been made before several of you were on the board with his, with his proposal, and the discussion during um that meeting was that as the cars come through the drive-through facing the westbound traffic on, on Deming Road, that some sort of screening there would be beneficial so as not to create confusion with traffic lights coming towards you on the wrong side, and therefore some breaking it up with some landscaping, um, the, the, um, the, what do you call it, the guard, the guard rail that is there was also added, um, but yes, it was a condition of approval that, that's why the plan was brought back to us.
I'm just asking, the light of the fact that nothing's gonna grow there, just making this guy jump through this, you know.
I think he came to us.
He's just gonna die too.
He did, yeah.
George, he came to us and said like to switch it out.
Yeah, he, he is hot.
Well, I'm just wondering.
Oh, I know what you're saying, why spend money, yeah, I got this, yeah, no, I hear you.
He went to a nursery to try to figure out what the plant looks like. So, uh, you know, I mean, if you've got a good chalk structure, something will grow there.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, I mean, even if he, I mean, I, I understand that he has everything equal space, maybe if he just wants to put like two or three in a cluster and then a space, and maybe another two or three, do I feel to do something like that? As opposed to have, you know, to, to save, I mean, I appreciate the measure he's going through, so if we can save him a little bit of money
Yeah.
yet still, um, uh, achieve what we need.
Any plant, plastics that don't, that don't, will be killed.
Yeah.
The separate is, it's, it's been, every, any plant that's gonna go there is gonna be killed by salt, right? I mean, there, there's a reason why, uh, Rome salted Carthage after, after, after they burnt the city down, so no one could ever live there again. Um, quite frankly, so no one could plant any crops again. Um, salt will kill any, almost any living thing. And it, and it eats just about everything too.
Boy, I'm telling you, I've got, uh, I've got pessimism over here.
It has nothing to do with pessimism, John, it has to do with the fact that I, I agree with Commissioner Miller, I don't wanna see this guy uh, just toss more money down the drain.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that, and that's why I'm trying to, to see if there is a compromise, because he is making the extension out to us, he wants to do the replantings, and if we can um, achieve what we needed to with the um, intent of crossing the traffic or whatever that.
Kind of brown coat.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that'd be fine, because he did a really nice job on the building, so we wanna, we wanna be a good neighbor. Wait, hold on, yeah. Just didn't realize that I was so dismal.
Yeah, I think he, I think he wants to put something there too, but he, you know, got to go to the nursery to find out what it give.
Alright, my suggestion was going to be that perhaps he plants a couple, you know, or a few, cluster and see before, before about, you know, weather a year, weather a year and see if the, a small number. Um, but again, it's the pleasure of the commission.
Yeah.
Well, if he, if he's really, if he's really set.
Remember one, that.
I'm just saying, setting it back, that's all. Uh, trying to set it back a little bit more, so that way, uh, if there is any salts, that it won't get into the root system. Um, and then, um, if it does still keep going forward like that, um personally, for me, I don't know about the rest of you guys, I would say, tell them, you know, save your money, honestly, save your money, uh because you've done everything you could, and um after that, it's not a big deal.
I'm sure, we went back to him with that, probably fall in his chair.
We give a little heart, bud.
Alright, I think Brian wanted to say something, Brian, was that you trying to pipe in?
No, I'm all good, I'm good with any, uh.
George, he's got, yeah.
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Paul. Can I just say a couple of other things, just note in your packet that you did get something from from the city of Middletown, just that we just have to do on there, um, a, a butter's notice for that, for some new regulations. Uh, but they're interesting regulations, so you may be interested in that, we also, I asked, um, I sent out an, um uh, in one of the emails, several of the emails, a question with regard to having an executive session next week within which to discuss the Rio Vista application and the impact, let me get the wording straight, two months second. Uh executive sess- session for Rio Vista and an overview of the recent legislation. So the choices that we had um proposed were seven twenty-one, which is next month, uh, next Wednesday, um, possibly five, six, seven, you know, whatever PM, um, or alternatively, seven twenty-six, which is the following Monday. Um, I have three members, um, indicated they were available. Um, Steve would be recused, and um, I, I believe that's the only member not eligible to attend.
Okay, so, um I guess we wanna try to see, is everyone, is everyone available on seven twenty-one, which would be Wednesday?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, I just wanna figure out, okay, so Peter, are you available?
Yep, seven twenty-one at six PM.
Uh, hang on, uh, is it gonna be at six?
Five is thrown out at me, six or seven, or anything in between.
Is five good or six?
Yeah, I can do five or six, whatever's good with everybody.
Alright, so, and now I'll ask Brian, because I know that you're also working, so.
Uh, the later the better for me, so, I mean, I would prefer six, seven would be fantastic, but if six works for everybody, I can make it happen.
Okay, does, how about for you, Andrew?
Um, I'm much like Brian, um so later usually the better for me.
Alright.
Um typically I get out at seven.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, or close to seven, I should say, on Wednesday. So, yeah, or close to seven, I should say, on Wednesdays, so. It'd be extremely hard for me to get there, but I could be able to, uh, switch around my schedule.
Could you make six?
Maybe earlier time? I would, would not be able to make six, if I can't make seven, I can't make six.
Okay.
Um, but I will do my best to make the seven a lot meeting. Uh, I will most likely have to, uh. Move a few things around and talk to a few of my coworkers, in order to make that work.
One day better.
Okay.
One day better.
Or is it just?
Monday's the same thing, seven, pardon, uh, Tuesday's the best day.
Okay.
Oh.
Sorry.
Believe I couldn't get a meeting, or we, we had other conflicts on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And council meets Tuesday.
Tuesday council, yeah.
I think there was another conflict on Tuesday, I don't, I have my calendar and that information in front of me. Following Tuesday, I have CBA, but, um, I'm not sure about that, I don't have that on this.
I think next Thursday, uh. Next Thursday would be, would be booked anyway.
Thursday was problematic as well, yeah, Thursday was problematic with conflicts.
Caucus, yeah.
Okay.
Four.
So, uh, if we went on the Wednesday at seven PM. The twenty-first at seven PM, that would be good for Brian, is that good for you, Peter?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and would you possibly be able to make seven? So.
Can you zoom in?
He can arrive, no, he can arrive shortly, we are hoping, because it's an executive session, it won't be recorded, so we are hoping to be around the conference table in the.
Okay.
Oh, it would be at the, uh, doc, documentary.
Yeah, would be not recorded, and, you know, it'd be a private session, although the, the, the call of the meeting to then go into executive session public, then. It would be private.
You could do seven.
Yeah, I could do seven.
I can do seven, I know Diane could do.
What do you got?
She probably won't be here.
I don't know what.
I don't know what she's gonna be, I, I got the impression of.
I did not get a response to that, um, message, it was just a message.
All right, well, I guess, um, I guess we'll do this, the Wednesday at seven, which is gonna be, are you gonna be okay with that, Maureen?
Yeah, that was, that's fine.
Time Hall closes at four thirty, so that's fine. All right.
I just wanna put this up. I'm sure, if I can make it, I will come. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I do not know, again, I do not know.
Do you work a, a great distance from here?
I work in Middletown.
Okay, all right, well.
I'm six sixty, so.
Well, if, if seven is so problematic, perhaps what we could do is start a little earlier, because I have a feeling that there will be. Um, probably some discussion, and you know how it always is setting up or whatever, so if we start at six thirty. At least to move it a little bit, and then if you can make it, anytime you can make it, just get here, we can always fill you in. Brian, is six thirty okay, and Peter?
Absolutely not.
All right, Brian, we'll have a big time, Brian.
Six thirty is fine.
All right, let's, let's do six thirty, only because then, I mean, I, I'm taking Maureen into consideration too.
Absolutely.
And because she's gonna be here at four thirty, waiting for us, uh, she won't travel, I know you can say, oh, you're gonna do work, okay. So let's call it Wednesday, let's call it Wednesday.
Plenty of you that are.
All right, let's call it Wednesday at six thirty.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn by Mr. Willman, Commissioner Willman, second?
Second, by Commissioner Willman.
Okay, thank you, further discussion, all's fair, I. It's gonna be eight thirty one.
They shouldn't somebody be taking.
I have been, I have, well, you've been trying.